Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the July 2nd meeting. It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question.
Any questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Uh, next one is petitions and communications. First is thank you letter from Anne Peck on the cemetery. It's there for you guys to just read, thanking us on how the job that we're done. Okay, the next one is a little more than just a, uh, some petition. It's them wanting and what I want to do is assign that to a committee. Because it's a option that we can do to help some low-income people purchase a house. Or, we're not really involved in ad purchasing, but we, well, we go over it. They gave me a big stack, so if I can get that assigned to a committee, I will give the stack or paper to them.
Finance committee?
You want finance? Okay, if it's assigned to the finance, I'll give you the packet. Mr. Spera? The county has done that, so, has helped them for the people that's in the county that we, or the options for us to do it, so. But, see, it looked like ahead of Mr. Dolan, looked it over and it looked like there was some expenditure of money possible, not sure how much. So, I thought it was best to pass it to finance, or now the finance committee, but to some committee to look it over and see. That's why I went. Okay, next item on the agenda is library summer reading parade request. It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question.
Question's been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Next item is the Noddy Fine Street scourge request for July 19th. It's been moved and seconded, discussion? The second, Mr. Dye?
Do they have full permissions to see it on here?
Noddy Fine, they do.
Yeah.
It's on the application book.
Yeah, we updated one.
Yep. If it's in force. Any other questions?
Call for the question.
Question's been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Uh, the next one is the monthly revenue report. It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Citizens' request. I'll give you a minute or two to look it over and have any questions. Okay. We'll move on. Another complaint. Uh, should be having another one pretty cool. After the next one, what I'll do is I promise I'll give a little report on what's going on there. They seem to have a meeting that looks like like every two months. And so I'll try to write up a little thing and I'll put it into, in the packet on the meeting after. You know, to give you a little report of what's going on.
Okay, yeah, just crossed my mind the other day.
That's good, thank you. We'll do that. Good to keep you guys more informed on what's going on there. Also, I would like to, to the finance committee, say that the budget, I'm almost got her done. I'm just sort of waiting for JS to finish. So I'm hoping to get that done next week, first of next week, if we can then start assigning, or had not assigned, have a meeting with the finance committee. Yeah, I'm not asking, I'm just saying the budget should be ready first of next week, Monday, Tuesday. It's pretty much ready, like I said, we're waiting for him to look it over and adjust the numbers if he's still fit, seems fit. And we're ready to go.
A week from this Friday? Uh, no, I'm going to be in town that Friday, I think it's 25th, and the 28th, and the 29th.
Want to do it Thursday?
Sure.
You can hand it out to us then.
You want to do that, or you want to just give it to the finance committee, or you want every, all the council right off the bat?
Technically, what we did before was the finance committee of the corrections.
And then after you guys look it over, then you print everything for the council.
24th. 21st.
Okay, we'll be ready then. 1 o'clock or 1:30?
1.
1? We'll post it for you too.
Thank you.
We'll have the two items on there if you want the, one that you've assigned, at least to look at it, and then the budget will probably be the biggest part of it, so. Okay, uh, courts of officers, boards of the city, uh, city attorney Dolan, Mr. Dolan, sorry.
Yes, sir. Uh, I just got out of a criminal jury trial today at which the defendant was convicted and assaulted disorderly conduct, we assaulted and robbed another Dillon residence. And we served a private nurse at their hospital. And then there was also a criminal mischief charge against Anthony, who started the jury later to equip with the Qs, so if you forgive me a little time. I do want to take an opportunity, however, to thank officers Seth Hager and Jeremy Alveridge, our newest officers on Dillon Police Department. They prepared the new material. I think they did a good job on the case and I think that's a long vacation. I have been attempting to find a substitute prosecutor for the case which I mentioned last meeting. I have been unsuccessful in doing so. So, I will start using the phone tomorrow and we'll see what happens. That's, I guess, my report.
Any other questions? Okay. Next one is planning board. Probably, I know there's been no meetings, so.
It's a little bit hard to get everybody together for the summer.
Yeah, summer is a tough time. Same thing with the zoning commission, the same thing. Also, I'll put out, if you don't mind me spending a little money, I'll put out advertisement. We gotta get some more. The zoning needs two more and so does the planning. If you don't mind, I'll advertise a little bit in the papers to say, please, the public, come volunteer to put the planning board and the zoning commission, so. Yeah, to make it so.
Begging is the order.
We'll do, obviously, I'll get that out. Next item is director of operations, Mr. Turner?
Uh, there's no zoning compliance report, but I would like to report that the wastewater treatment plant is meeting expectations. It's meeting its discharge requirements, just like the engineer and the, uh, the vendor that sold us the plant equipment. The water and sewer committee, we took a little field trip out there last week, the week before last, and, and I think everybody was pleasantly surprised on, on how everything was working. So, yeah, it's working well. Very pleased with it.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I was just going to say, that was a great tour. Really appreciate your time, we did everything around that, while we're not taking care of those real places.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next one, police chief, Mr. Kraft.
Before I submit the officer of activity report for the month of June 2014.
It's probably been set second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question.
Questions been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or statement?
Nothing further.
Okay. Next item is the fire chief, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, thank you. You were back against the 12-month, uh, fire budget report.
So moved second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question.
Questions been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Another note, court of July, I think we had a lot of, a little moisture then, had a great court of July, as far as fire went, nothing serious going on. As always, July is the month we have to lay all the homes out on the ground and do the hose tests, which we did last, a week before the 9th. These streets, hospital, between hospital and the fire service, that all drained downhill or all these areas, so it's, it's good since they messed up at the school. We're usually down in June, but test every inch of hose we have, make it sure it's been lined for service and continue the training.
Okay.
Ready to respond.
Any questions?
Did the sirens go off like three times Saturday? Around 7 o'clock, they went off, and then I heard sirens like, you know, cars heading out north, and I thought, what is going on?
I think it was that emergency, the moss emergency, oh, we sent that earlier in the day, and then Saturday night, there was a, a lightning strike on one side of the freeway.
Oh, okay, yeah, that.
Monomarker 86 something.
Yeah, okay, that's what I heard.
And I was out of town until last night, so I couldn't be perfectly, that's me.
Out of curiosity, do you know where all this smoke's coming from?
Where's it coming from?
Oh, it's, it happens if it blazes up there. It's been, you know, a week ago that blew in, over eastern part of Montana, and that, that's where the haze is coming from this. It feels like 50,000 acres on the west, a little too early, anxious too often, so that clears up.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. Next item is, uh, the judge, Mr. Irwin? It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Next item is the city treasurer, Mr. Neil Drucks.
Not part of your political package, it ended up in front of, uh, the bucket cash report and bank reconciliation and the mess with the court. We collected a considerable amount of money in the month of June from two county tax watch, about similar as last year. And, um, all of our accounts are balanced and, and ready to go in, before the year end, year-end audit, and we're preparing for that, particularly Jamie and I. The payroll went out, uh, a calendar day earlier in the month, in June, so there's no reconciliable items associated with payroll under the outstanding checks. Usually there's an electronic, uh, transfer to pay for medical and, and a little workers' comp, like that, but most of the years, we're still, uh, and we wanted to, how about, uh, we're staying on the dotted board, including this one, we continue to pay for the rest of the, uh, the sewer plant construction. And there will be a surplus over the amount of the bond issued, and as soon as we have a better handle on that amount, I'll give you the information out of that. Would be, uh, and, um, I have no other comments or any questions.
I would move that we accept the cash reconciliation of the assessment for.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Ream?
Just a quick question. Uh, you had got this, these balance sheets and everything on your, on your budget work, that cash available line?
Yeah.
Is it, uh, code cash as of 2/30 at that time, or is it still flexing?
No, it's still flexing, still. So, numbers are a little different because they're still getting things input than when I put that number out. So we, I gotta go through and do the one last. Now, probably pretty set right now with this, so that will be reflected on the sheet, so. Did that answer? Yeah. Okay. Call for the question. Questions been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Any other?
We have made about $900,000 in bond payments, uh, early in July, a couple of, you know, paid for all of our obligations, so, you can expect the cash balances to be down a little bit as a result of that at the end of this quarter.
Okay. Right, move on. Okay, library board.
Thank you, Neil.
Hello, report.
I'm sorry, I'm reporting. Working on, uh, revising, uh, buy offs a little bit. Look at them again, you know, on the one seat, the next one, see. Recommend any changes if, if we have.
Okay. Thank you. And the tree board?
Uh, no, what you put?
Any questions for the tree board? Okay. Next item, now we're under reports, sustaining committees, judiciary. Finance committee?
Uh, before you have the July 2014 meeting minutes, ask for approval.
Move for approval? It's been moved and seconded for approval of the minutes, discussion?
Call for the question.
Questions been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Shouldn't we be clearing the contracts as a council?
Yeah, that's the next item.
That's the next item.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's number one right underneath that.
Okay, under the recommendation of the finance committee, we recommend to the council that we approve both the employee and the police contracts. I don't know whether you want to do it separate or both together.
So, do you guys, either way works?
So then I would move that we approve the police and employee contract.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question. Danny?
I, I've read it two or three times, and I think it is a good contract. And the meeting, the finance committee, I went to and answered a lot of questions, and I appreciate you answering those questions. So, I, I think that it's a good deal, I think it's great for both city and the employees and the police.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Questions been called for. All those in favor approving both the employee, city employee and the police contracts? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, next item is health and fire order. I remembered put it on the ad.
There's nothing.
Okay, thank you. Next item, cemetery, uh, for minutes. Mr. Prodsen's not here. Who's the other one on the cameras there? Okay, Bill, you want to do that?
Yeah, we, uh, we talked about the cemetery security. We went up there and we, uh, pretty much met with Paul and Danny Devers. We went over what security we might need. Looking at buying four motion detector cameras, and then a motion light out on the front page. And one, next, for, to, to make counsel to pass it.
Want to do, first you want to do the minutes?
Yeah.
I'm accepting a motion to approve the minutes. So moved?
Second.
It's been seconded to approve the minutes, discussion? Call for the question.
Who can do the survey?
Are you? Your fourth recall? Oh, you're doing that?
Um, I'm, we don't, yeah, they were looking at about $500 per camera, and that's with a waterproof case and, and, and motion detector.
I imagine, I imagine Jeff May, you know, McCoson, you know, I know Derek. And that's Trondes, excuse me. I'll work the video.
Any questions? Call for the question.
Questions been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we go to motions for the recommendations.
Yeah, if we, um, if we would like to make a recommendation that we go ahead and buy the four cameras and the motion detector lights for the cemetery.
So moved, second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to purchase four security cameras for the installation at cemetery. That would be item number three on the list. We'll go back to the next two, uh, discussion. Call for the question. Mr. Dye?
The funding, where is the funding coming from?
What?
I asked you, where are the, the, where are the funding?
Oh, the funding. Yeah. The cemetery. I was gonna say, plenty of, well, we got summer.
This is over here.
This one is.
I just had a quick question.
Mr. Ream? We have no. Call for the question. Questions been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now let's go back to number one. Okay.
And then we also have the, the day-to-day vendor states at Depot Park for, yeah.
That's okay.
And we need to get, maybe together to go ahead and, and run that, if the council still wants to do the, the vendor spaces down at the depot park. Chamber has done it in the past, and then they didn't have anybody to run it this year, so they just decided to drop it. And we've had vendors already come in wanting to pay their fees, their rental spots for it.
And the city would be a committee if it was city, would pay it, and Turner, Stacy, they would.
Well, we've always been thinking on the books for that, didn't we? Didn't we?
They made a motion at that meeting to charge $200 per spot for the three days. The chamber at their Boardwalk craft fair used to charge 150, and, uh, in the dis, in the next discussion with Mandy, we need to find a spot so it doesn't, so it doesn't mess with her activities down there to bring that same time.
Boss, boss, she's doing the, 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 that, art gallery.
So what kind of jewelry are you talking about?
Oh, the, the jewelry and just little things, different, wears that they made here.
You have been, I mean, I've always served on common time.
I mean, they make silver and turquoise jewelry, and we could always have the, the other end of the park too, by the museum. I think there's plenty of room there.
The location, the location is not the issue.
Call for the question.
We have a motion, we accept the recommendation to allow the city vendors at Depot Park to come live there.
Okay, second. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as, I'm Lynn Giles, and I have a comment as per the, um, museum. I'm speaking as the director of the museum. We have had a lot of abuse of the power at the, um, museum, at the depot, in the past, to the point that I've gone in and turned off the breaker boxes so that people weren't running up the power bills, because they'd just go over and plug in, they didn't say kiss my foot to anybody. Also, uh, the Arts Council has asked permission, and they do give us a donation, to plug in for their beer trailer. So, my suggestion is that if you're gonna have this crap, they need to go to the other end, or the question is the power doesn't even come up.
Okay.
Because, you know, like I said, the Arts Council has already spoken with us about the power.
For a beer trailer?
For the beer trailer.
I thought they were using the brewery.
I don't know.
Boat freezing boat.
And anyway, and they have in the past, and they've done that in the past, and they give us a donation for doing that. And, um, it's, you know, it's all under control, whereas in the past, it's been a nightmare. The lady with her cell phone truck pulled right up on our apron and plugged right in, and, and called me every name in the book. And I suggested she didn't have permission, and, and it was not a pleasant experience, and I have no desire to go there.
I don't believe that vendors use any power.
Oh, yes.
They have in the past.
They have in the past.
I mean, the chambers ran it before, but I don't remember it.
Yeah, they, they have in the past, because that's the only place to plug in.
Yes, it's not an odd one for all of us.
I think that the ones that have plugged in, eating the food, most of the vendors that we're talking about are the ones that aren't eating the food. They're, they're in there with jewelry, they've already made their stuff, they're there just trying to sell it. They've done it for years.
Yeah, they've never had that part.
Okay. Any other, instructor?
I mean, I would say that would be, whoever the committee is, is one that would be responsible for monitoring all of that stuff. I don't think the museum would have to do that.
Any other questions?
I'll just have to look at Mandy, and that's what Spaceman and I, we were talking about it, so, maybe it would be a. Maybe it would be a good idea to put the vendors towards the south end and let all have Mandy give her two cents worth here or two on where it would best fit your activity.
Do you have any idea now?
We can do it. Well, I don't know.
Wow, so.
Okay. Mandy Moss, I am the executive director of the Southwest Penn Arts Council. And I put in the request for the street closure so we can do an event Friday before Labor Day. We talked to Brett Nackey, the head brewery, to provide some of the merch. He didn't think he could do enough for the entire event because he's also parting his business. So, we did plan on having a beer truck like we had last year, Zappos or Zaps. Distributor, thank you. Out of, that's who handled it last year and they just brought down a truck and we plugged it in and sold right out of the truck. We're also doing, I'm chatting with Los Cretas about doing the vending. They, last year it worked out really well that the street was open and people just kind of walked back and forth with disposable plates. And now that they're serving in the brewery, they just really enjoy having people be able to eat their food in other venues. So, we're chatting with them about doing that, which is why it would be nice to have the street closed so people don't have to worry about being run over when they go to get a taco. So, last year we put everything, the stage was backed right up to the museum, the old depot, because we had to plug in for the sound system. And then the art fair was at the other end of the park and that worked out fine. Most of them weren't even open on Friday night. They set up their stuff and left. Nobody really did anything that we saw. And then they were cleared out by 10 o'clock Saturday morning and that's when they were kind of opening up. So, ideally, here not to, we're going to let people on the park food trucks there to then because we're trying to make some money. But I would understand that's something that the city decides to do because it's city property, so. Any questions?
Now, we'll be, if there's a call for question, we'll vote on number two to recommend to do the depot part. Call for a question? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, so we can sell the spots to city. For lease or whatever. But number one, now we're back to number one. This is to approve the arts council street closure request. We've had Mandy already sort of get us into it. Do we have a motion?
I'll make motion.
Second. Could move the second discussion. Any other questions for Mandy? Or does anybody have any statements on her? Call for a question? Okay. Questions been called for? All those in favor allowing the street to be closed, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
One question. When we get the $200, what are we doing with that?
Yeah, it'd be, I would put it in general fund under miscellaneous revenue. I don't know any other really place to put it, I think. Unless you guys come up and could go into parks. I mean, but that's under the general fund. But we can kind of highlight it that when we go through the budget, it will have that amount of money to be put more into parks if that's where you guys so deep. And that's fine with me, I, that's how I was envisioning it. If you guys have a better place to put it, at the budget time would be the time to put the, to put it in, so. Did I answer? Okay. Okay, if there's another. Let's go to the next one, street alley committee, Mr. Arkin.
No report. I did get the minutes approved.
Okay. It was tough, we were going to, but some PDFs that you sent. So, thank you. Thank you. Next item, water and sewer committee, Mr. Carter.
Well, it's before you get minutes, more than a sewer person. We also got a couple pieces of cash over, different projects to move on.
Do we have a motion for approval of minutes? Second. Could move the second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Call for a question? Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Minutes approved. Any other? I see you have an item underneath there.
Recommend to the council.
So, second. Okay, could move second discussion. Now, this is the building that, in the new sewer lagoon, in case if anybody is curious, it's, there's an intake, I call it this corkscrew, I'm not sure. That's kind of what it is, is actually, yeah, it kind of gets out and dumps all the big waste of cloth or whatever, so it doesn't go into the sewer lagoon, not lagoon anymore, it keeps going, lagoon, but the processing plant, wastewater treatment plant. Okay. So, it does, so mainly it's just the waste going into there, nothing solid in that. But they're worried about it being freezing and that would not be good. That would break the park and the park is about $200,000. So, they recommend put a building around there that's slightly heated. So, as soon as you put a building around it, there is explosive gases, so you have to treat them accordingly with ventilation, explosive proof lights, all that. So, that's the building. So, any other discussion, questions? Call for a question? Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay.
Is that the motion to build it or just to consider it?
Build it. Okay. So moved second it, discussion? Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Any others?
That's all I have for questions.
Okay. Well, next item is the public comments on items of significant public interest not on the agenda within jurisdiction of city.
I, I don't know if you can play, but there's certainly.
Your name?
Oh, Eden's, but you're 55, South Dakota.
Thank you.
There's still something bothering me about last Tuesday's finance meeting and I guess I'd love to know exactly more about the agendas. But when I brought up the fact that in March, following finance meeting in the afternoon, when the mayor was out of town and this year was signing, the council immediately without anything in advance to the public, without anything on the agenda, following that afternoon's decision by the finance committee, voted not to pay mayor clerk and legal fees that, you know, what I'm talking about. And Lynn Wested said, I said that it wasn't on the agenda. She said, we had a special agenda. And I'm just wondering legally what that means, what that was, because it wasn't on the agenda.
On the agenda, you'll see approval of claims and that fell under approval of claims. We have the right to approve or disapprove of the claim.
Is that right? I was thinking that at the time, it's like they had already been approved.
We go through that on the first Wednesday of every month, most generally, unless we have a, a long weekend involved.
So, what is the special agenda? Mr. McGinn, that was referred to.
I would probably say that I was an error on that. Was that all sound right, Mr. Don?
Well, without looking at the minutes from the meeting, I would not be able to give them that much information. I'd have to do that.
It was a rather major decision and it was made, it was rather through that night. Well, when we always come on and I remember it well and it is all on record and I, I want it on the record and I'm just, you know, wanted to answer what was the special agenda was. And Mr. McGinn said that that was a normal action.
Okay. Thank you.
I have something on the same issue. It was brought forward to the council and we agreed not to pay for the bill. Then the next meeting, the mayor vetoed it and then the council overran its veto, which is a procedure. Next thing I know, I quickly hear in following meeting that the finance committee agreed to pay for it with the mayor. And it was just a quick thing where the mayor said that he met with the finance committee and said they'll pay for it. Wouldn't that happen to come forward to the council since we voted twice for that? I mean, that still puzzles me and several other people.
Yeah, it's been several months and, you know, so I might be able to sketch it, but yeah, I think it was a month or two after all of that took place, it, we discussed that at the finance committee and approved that claim. And again, that went in on the agenda on approved claims.
You have to report to the council?
Yeah, it always comes.
It didn't go forward to council, you approved it.
Yeah, yeah. Every month we approve claims. The first meeting of the month tipping.
I don't remember anything about saying that we accepted it because the second week, the second time we did it, it was denied veto. And that's the last thing I ever heard, was that.
So, was it this part we looked at?
Yeah.
So, was it, do you mind if we looked into it and reported the next meeting when everything happened?
Yeah, I like that.
So, was it a claims report?
That's where it was, after they approved, to what I understand, the finance committee approved the claim and then it went forth. Claim, the first time it was held back and then they voted to approve that, so it got put back into the claims packet, which they voted to do all claims there and it was approved.
Yeah.
But I will look into it and tell you if that was incorrect, what I remember, I'll bring it forth at the next meeting. If that's okay. Mr. Graham, or, or if you can say your name.
Hey, Graham, 136 West Banning. And I think I can explain how this all happened on this, the reason nobody remembers saying the bill, is because, again, they hold the finance committee on the same day they hold the city council meeting, which means none of this stuff the finance committee talks about is put in the packet as required by law 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So, then, you never got an opportunity to see what they talked about on the finance committee because it was never put in the packet. It shows up on the desk the day of the meeting, the night of the meeting, I might add, which means the general public does not get their 48 hour notice as required by law, due respect of, but yet they continue to have the finance committee on the same day they vote on the thing, which technically is a violation of open meeting law, but again, we really, county much don't care about that, I guess.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I just say, to the shame, my name is Horace Javi. I read your minutes on the finance committee and I was in attendance of that meeting. And just for the public's information, I mean, Mayor Clarking did an excellent job of explaining how he negotiated and the schedules and the programs that he uses, he used in the negotiations and answered all of the questions that the council or the committee had at that time. But the minutes don't reflect any of the questions that were asked. They don't say anything about what really transpired in that committee. And for the public's information, I think that's kind of important for the reason that it was such a huge deal at the council meeting that night, that, that you people did not know anything about any of the contracts and hadn't read them and were not informed and blah, blah, blah. So, I just think that these minutes were really naked of good information that's rightful to the public to know. And there wasn't a thing that Mr. Clark, that Mayor Clarking answered that night that could not have easily been answered at the council meeting the night that the contracts were in the packets. And the public would have been here to hear that information, those answers, which would, I feel would have been very valuable information for him. But thank you.
And I personally, on the record, I had no problem passing it to the finance committee. I had no problems with doing that, so I'm out.
Any other questions? Call for adjournment? Second. Could move to adjourn and second it, although I don't need a question. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Meeting adjourned.